Speech and also then a photograph with the commissioners.
That'd be great. Please proceed.
Thank you. I'm Tina Yurich, Executive Director of Clay County Senior Services, and we want to thank you for the resolution and recognition of World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, which is June 15th, and why many of us are wearing various shades of purple. We also want to thank all our partners that are here because many of them are doing what they can to raise awareness about abuse, which can take the -- it can be emotional abuse, it can be physical, financial abuse. We all know that there is a growing amount of fraud and scams that are happening all the time and very difficult to keep up with. I'd like to also take this time to recognize our Clay County Sheriff's Department. They have helped us promote this Awareness Day and an event we had yesterday with a national speaker. Also, what they do day in and day out when they are seeing fraud and physical abuse and, you know, those real first responders. So, we really appreciate all that you do. And to think about how can we all work together closer as a community to help to combat this terrible issue. I think in the state of Missouri, we are doing pretty well. I hear that we have a great Attorney General's Office. Somebody reported today that they're doing a lot in terms of elder abuse and neglect. So, let's think of ways we can also continue to strengthen those safety nets. And again, if all our partners could stand today and just so that you can be recognized, great. Thank you so much, and if it's okay, we'd all love to come up for a photo.
That would be great. Before we do that, can you give us, because, you know, obviously you are connected with our seniors board that we have here in the county, which is financed by a special tax. Could you give us a little bit of background of where people can go, where seniors can go if they need to access resources, not just in the abuse realm, but in other issues that they might have concerns?
Absolutely. We like to think that Clay County Senior Services is sort of the first door or gate, one of the first doors that they can go through to find information or resources. We have an up-to-date website, clayco seniors dot org, and then our local phone number is four five five forty eight hundred. Many of the other seniors access resources through our partners that are here today in this room, and we're happy to direct people to where they need to go to access resources.
Thank you. Commissioner Carpenter, I believe you had something you'd like to say?
Well, I just want to say thanks for all the work that you and all of you do in this realm, and very grateful to Clay County Senior Services. And of course, when it comes to elder abuse, I know that it's a huge issue, and as you mentioned, with all of the potential for scams and fraud out there, not something that's going away anytime soon. So, I know it requires our diligent attention, and just grateful to all of you. Thanks.
Absolutely. Yeah, we appreciate you.
Commissioner Thompson, would you like to add anything?
I'll be very brief, but yes, now I want to thank everybody and all the great organizations we have here in Clay County to help keep our most treasured citizens very safe. Like you said, there are so many types and forms of abuse when it comes to financial, to physical, emotional, and we just want to make sure we have all those resources out there. So, thank you so much once again.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to finish the comments from the Commission by saying that as I've been in this office, there have been a number of times when there have been issues that have come up regarding seniors. Obviously, the Sheriff's Department has always been there and always been very helpful, but I did not want to leave out the county prosecutor. I've gone to their office with a number of concerns more around revolving around the idea of scams and that sort of thing as opposed to abuse, thankfully. But they have always been extremely helpful, and they have, as does the sheriff, connections more broadly to bring in the resources of statewide people to come in and help seniors resolve some of the issues that they run into.
Thank you. I'm really glad that you mentioned our local county prosecutor's office. Thank you. Yes.
Is there, and before we go, I didn't know if there's anyone else who wanted to say anything. Could you go ahead? Are there different organizations represented here that you'd like to?
Yes, there are.
Please go ahead and just maybe let us know what some of these organizations are.
I would. I'd like to. We have Rebuilding Together Kansas City. We have Assistance League of Kansas City. We have Carney Enrichment Council and Carney Senior Center, Northland Healthcare Access, City of Liberty Parks and Recreation, Clay County Senior Services, and Smithville Senior Center. And who else did I? I think that, I think that, yeah. So, we were really thrilled with the turnout today. Thank you all.
It's a veritable sea of purple.
Yes.
With that, we will stand at ease for a moment, and those who would like to come up and have a picture as we present the certificate, we'll go ahead and do that. And then, once we have taken care of that, we will resume our business of the day.
Is the county prosecutor here today? It'd be nice to have him in.
Is there anybody from prosecutor's office?
We'd love to have him.
No?
I can call him.
Well, we will go ahead, and like I said, when we come back, if someone else wants to speak, they can. I didn't want to cut anybody off.
We hear examples all the time of different situations they run across with seeing some of the older, you know, our older adults, you know, taking advantage of the solutions that are kind of...
Are you going to be able to get us off?
I got to, yeah.
Okay.
All right. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Administrator, if you could proceed with that?
Yes. As one of the items that we have talked about as certain planning and zoning projects have come forward, one of the things we have talked about in kicking off for 2023 is the update to the comprehensive plan. That is a very important project. That's a very important and somewhat lengthy process. And so, we wanted to present to the commissioners this afternoon a little bit about what that process would look like and sort of the timetable of moving forward on that project. So, Planning and Zoning Manager Kip Jones is here to provide information about the process of updating the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Jones, please proceed when you are ready.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. So, I appreciate the time to discuss this. It's been a kind of a topic of discussion at both the County Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, want to give you a little bit of history of our plans and regulations. So, the early versions of our zoning and subdivision regulations, they actually start in 1949. So, those were initially adopted by the court, but they did not include any overall comprehensive plan. So, those plans were updated every few years. We have several different versions of them, but Clay County's first comprehensive plan came into effect in 1997. And that plan was revised with our current plan, which was adopted in June of 2008. So, that's our current plan. The Land Development Code, which would be our version of our zoning and subdivision regulations, was adopted in February of 2012. And those two documents kind of work hand in hand to see how we're going to develop the unincorporated portions of Clay County. So, that's a little bit about the history. So, why should we consider updating the comprehensive plan? Now, there could be a bunch of different answers for that, but I think one of the big reasons is to address changing conditions in the unincorporated portion of Clay County. So, how do we go from the city level to the county? Because we all know Clay County is growing. The annexation and growth patterns for the cities have changed in that 14 years since we adopted the 2008 plan, and several of those cities have updated their comprehensive plans as well. For instance, Smithville went through a comp plan update in 2020, Carney in 2016. So, those are just a couple of examples. Also, we want input from all community partners. We want the cities, the property owners, developers, environmental groups to have a say in how we develop Clay County in the future. We also want to implement lessons learned from the current comp plan. So, there's great things in the current comp plan, but there's some areas that we could improve on as well. So, I think that's a big one, especially for planning and zoning staff, is we want to use that current plan as our base, but make it better. And then, typically, a comprehensive plan is good for 10 to 15 years. So, we're almost 14 years to the date, to this date of when the current comp plan was adopted. Wanted to give you a little bit of a timeline on what this may look like. Now, this could change, but this is kind of how we see it, how it could possibly play out. Step one being the request for proposals, because we are going to need a consulting firm to help the county through this process. That could start as early as fall of this year. Step two would be selection of that consulting firm as early as February of '23, once next year's budget is adopted. Then that's when the update would begin. We would use our current plan as the start. We would include multiple county departments and multiple county plans. So, our plan needs to work hand in hand with the parks master plan, the airports master plan, the highway department's plan. All of those need to be considered when we update the planning and zoning plan. The next step would be public participation. We're going to rely heavily on that consulting firm to be innovative and find good ways to involve the public. And then, the last step would be the review and adoption of that comprehensive plan. Now, the comprehensive plan is a little bit unique compared to most items I bring in front of the County Commission. It kind of goes backwards of what we normally see. The County Commission plays a role with the comp plan as reviewing it and making recommendations to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission formally adopts the comprehensive plan. So, once the plan was finalized, it would come before County Commission. We would review it. You could make comments, changes, and make recommendations to the Planning and Zoning Commission, who would formally adopt that plan. Now, you can see that timeline is about a year and a half, and that's if everything goes, you know, smooth and as we plan it. So, then what are our next steps? So, I see our first step being drafting the RFP. So, that's step number one. Then, setting up a committee to review those proposals, and then starting the process to update the comp plan. So, that's a really brief, high-level overview. I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
No, I think that while brief, I think it gave us a feel for where you want to go, where you would recommend, I should say, that we should be going, and it makes a lot of sense. One of the concerns that I've always had is how do we, as we, as land converts from unincorporated to incorporated area, how do we make sure that we are doing our best to make that transition smooth and for the cities to have the availability to easily annex those areas that everybody agrees should go under city authority? As I've said before, we are not the proper mechanism to deliver a lot of the services that a suburban-style development needs to have. Cities are a much better and more efficient tool to deliver those services. So, I think this kind of review is going to help us really sharpen our focus and to come to some consensus on how we should go forward on some of those issues. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any questions or comments?
I do. Thank you. No, so, Kip, I'm very excited to see you here today, and we're discussing this. This is definitely something that needs to be put into place, and we need to get working on it. My big concern is, and just more of just wrapping my head around, what do you think the anticipated cost of this would be?
I would estimate $250,000 to $275,000.
Okay. I do like that we are going to have citizen and a lot of input in from our cities and outside agencies. I think that's a very important move forward. I'm looking forward to get started on it.
Yeah, and that's one of, would be one of my big items for when we're selecting that consulting firm, is how do they want to engage the public? Because, you know, we generally don't hear from the public until they have an issue in the backyard, but we want that input upfront in this case.
I agree. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yeah, no, thanks. No questions other than thanks for the presentation today and look forward to, you know, moving forward on this item. I know it's a thing we've discussed several times, and totally agree with your perspective in terms of, on the decision-making with the consulting firm, finding one that can really make the public feel like they've been involved in the process. Because, as you mentioned, you know, and you have to deal with it all the time when there are these sort of disagreements over planning and zoning issues, you know, often folks feel like they didn't have any input in the '08 plan, or at least that is their, you know, that's their personal impression, right? And so, if we can make this as public as possible next go around, maybe it will help moving forward with some of those disagreements. So, you know, thank you.
Thank you very much. Did you have anything further that you'd like to add?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Administrator?
No. We just wanted to give a high level to the Commission, and certainly as we begin the budget process for 2023, this will be something that will be obviously an addition that we will bring forward to the Commission for considering from a budgetary standpoint so that we can initiate the process.
Very good. Unless there are any further comments, we will end the discussion period. Very good. That brings us to public hearings. There aren't enlisted today. There are no consented items today. That brings us to our regular agenda. First item is 2022-185. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-185 is consideration of an agreement with Elms Hotel for a bicentennial event. This item was tabled from the last Commission meeting on May 25th. Commissioners had questions with regarding the specifics of the event, and so, the bicentennial commission has been invited to attend today's meeting and answer those questions. And I believe Mr. Bob Martin is in the audience representing the Commission to answer questions for the commissioners.
Very good. And by the way, as you're approaching the podium, thank you and the Commission for a good event, a great event, actually. Last Saturday, we had here on the grounds on the 4th, except for the little bit of rain that came our way. It was a nice event. Had a lot of enthusiasm. A lot of people were very, very happy to be there. So, thank you for your hard work that you and the Commission have put into this event.
Thank you. Should I try that again? Bob Martin with the bicentennial commission. I've never met a Mike I didn't like. I guess there was questions on, I don't want to be presumptuous, so I'll open it up to the questions that the commissioners have, and then I'll try to answer them and clarify them as best I can in the spirit of how the Commission has operated now for the last year.
While I wasn't here for the last meeting, my understanding was there was some concern about the idea of being, of the phrase invitation only. And if I understand correctly from what I've gotten, that was a phrase that probably was one that was not used. We may well want to go back and revisit that, that that might not have been as descriptive a phrase as the Commission, the bicentennial commission cared to use. So, there may be some, there may be some thoughts on that from the bicentennial commission.
Sure. It's certainly never been our intention to be exclusive. We took the charge that the Commission gave us, and then we made our own charge. And number one on that charge was be inclusive in the celebration for the entire bicentennial. We did, we are making up the marketing tools as we go, because we virtually started with a blank slate. Part of what we did on the previous events was incorporate email solicitations as well as paid and earned media to get people out to the event that you talked about this past month, to an event that snowed out twice in January to kick off the event. So, certainly it was not an intention of anyone to be exclusive in the promotion of the event. So, invitation only is not reflective of how we see this event being conducted.
And that might be something, excuse me, as we go forward, that we may well want to, because the document was drafted by staff with the, of course, information that they received. So, we may well want to ask staff to do some minor alterations as we have our discussion. And I would also welcome your input and, you know, in the name of the Commission, to tell us, make sure that we have gotten the correct spirit of whatever changes that we would make in the document.
Absolutely. We're here to follow your direction.
Very good. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. I'll start by saying that, you know, the events that have been put on by our bicentennial commission have been wonderful, and I think they have been great assets here in our community. My concerns are having a, because it does say invitation only. It seemed very private, exclusive, and with this kind of price tag associated, I wasn't sure how that benefits, you know, a majority of our citizens here in Clay County. Like, that's not an event, even still, I think it's 200 people that could attend this gala. How are they going to be selected? And is it?
We've done open invitations. I respect the question, obviously. We've done open invitations on each of our events to date. The most we've had is 55 people show up. We don't think that we've done an adequate enough job driving down to other constituencies that should be invited, particularly people that are doing events that have been recognized by the bicentennial commission on the Commission website. We haven't done a good job of encouraging mayors, for example, to invite their city councils. We had absolutely nobody show up from those particular events. So, what we're looking at is ways to do just exactly what you're talking about, Commissioner, and that's to expand the reach of the event. I'm speaking from personal experience now, but I hope that more than 200 people show up for this event. I hope that that's a problem that we enjoy with an open approach to marketing it.
So, is there a way that more than 200 people could, could attend this event?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Because I'd be very open to that. I just, it seems, just looking at it on the paper, it looks like invitation only, semi-formal, sit-down dinner with a very high price tag. And I have a hard time explaining that to people when they call me, and they're like, Megan, what's, what is this about? Why is this?
Sure. Sure. Just to clarify, the very, the price tag, it costs nothing for admission. So, making sure that there's no, and so, I understand what you're talking about, if I understand correctly, is the price tag for the event itself. And the Commission was given a budget. We've stayed within that budget. We've never gone one penny over. Even this expenditure wouldn't put us one penny over. So, I don't think that the allocation of the funds would be out of line relative to what the line item was that the commissioners originally delineated.
So, with the venue that is selected, and I, the Elms is beautiful. I love the Elms. Every time I go up to Excelsior, I try to stop in and visit them up there. Is that a place that, could it accommodate more than 200 people?
We can do it in phases. We can do the dinner in phases. We can switch it from a sit-down to a buffet. We can expand out into their lobby. There are options for us to grow the, to grow the opportunity, absolutely.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have right now.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. First of all, just thanks for, I know everybody's volunteering their time to help celebrate the bicentennial. So, thank you to you, and of course, everybody else who's helping to do it. But, no, I mean, I, you know, have the same general concern, but I think you've, I think you've answered it, which is that anybody can come. I mean, that's, yeah. So, you know, if, I think that's the key here, right, is that if anybody wants to attend, and you mentioned you'll take steps in terms of marketing, you know, to try to get the word out about the event so that everybody has, you know, hears about it, and if they want to attend, they can attend. But I think that's the key. Yeah. I mean, as long as it's open, an open event that anybody here in Clay County can attend, then I think that will make for a good event.
The one thing I would like to, I guess, suggest or request is that we're allowed to have, or we're endorsed to have some type of RSVP mechanism so that to Commissioner Thompson's concerns, that we maintain the price so that we have an anticipation of how many people are actually going to attend. And that can be as simple as an email address in a web, in a press release that we'll be sending out and things of that nature. We'll ask for RSVPs with the understanding that some people want RSVPs, show up, and they'll be more than welcome to help us celebrate.
Let's...
No, I just, is the Elms itself okay with not knowing the exact head count? Because if it's going to be sort of an open invitation as opposed to a, you know, an event where people have paid for a ticket and you have a specific head count, are they okay with sort of a range, like it could be 100 people or it could be 250 people, and we'll just see who shows up?
Absolutely. That's why they charge us a minimum, unfortunately, so the top end is open.
Good deal. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just wanted to revisit really quickly. So, what you would like from us would be, and this would be something for staff to help out with, and that would be to help you with the technical support, to be able to have a system where you could start processing RSVPs and come up with a viable head count, some, a number you can hang your hat on with some degree of confidence.
That would be fantastic. Right now, that mechanism through the county is lacking.
So, maybe the best thing to do is, obviously, staff can interact with you folks and maybe work out what is, what is doable on that, because that is one of the challenges, is, you know, you hope to have X number of people, and, you know, you can either go 50% of X or 200% of X. Both of those have their own set of challenges. So, the better count that you have, the more successful the event will be, and quite honestly, the less stressful it will be for those of you who are working so hard on it.
Those are all true facts.
With that, Administrator, I think you, I think you've gotten a little bit of the flavor of what it is, the concerns that have been expressed. And do you have any recommendations on page two, under issue? It does have the phrase invitation only. Do you have some alternative language that you would like to put before us before we take this up?
Well, certainly we can, and what the Commissioner is referring to is the request for Commission action. And under the category called issue, there's a statement that says this is a semi-formal event, is free and by invitation only. And so, in essence, we would modify that language and say that it would be, I'm assuming, may still be a semi-formal event and is free and will be marketed by the bicentennial commission. So, it's not by invitation only, but we'll be asking for RSVPs, which would help with...
Correct. That would be our ambition.
Planning. And, you know, we will certainly reach out and work with the Commission. There's probably a way that we could schedule some kind of RSVP reserve. So many tickets, we'd probably want to work with the Commission at some point. They may want to do seating, right? So, it may be you do 150 between a certain time and another seating. It just depends on what kind of response we get. So, we'll need to work through some logistics, I think, with the bicentennial commission to help ensure that this goes smoothly for everyone who wants to attend.
So, am I correct that this is, would, the request is that this be voted on and approved today? Am I correct in that assumption?
I would, again, as a reminder, this was on for consideration for action at the last meeting on May 25th and was tabled. And I do believe in conversations with the bicentennial commission and with the Elms, you know, the sooner that you can reserve the date and the room, which I believe is what they're looking for. So, if the Commission would be ready to take action on it tonight or this afternoon, that certainly, I'm sure, would be appreciated.
Well, the two parts to that, one part would be to make sure that my, that my assumption is correct, and that obviously the sooner that we can get a reservation made, the better. And I want to make sure that I am not misunderstanding the urgency of the matter. Mr. Martin, is that?
I don't think I can overstate the urgency. As much as we like the Elms selection, hopefully nobody from the Elms is here today, it was not our first choice. Our other choices that we hope to use are booked, plus to celebrate yet this year.
So, the preference for the bicentennial commission would be if we could have a decision today, that would be most helpful for what you're trying to put together?
That'd be our request, yes.
That being said, I think if we're going to vote on it today, if we can go ahead and put whatever language would be substituted in there, that way the Commission, if it is the will of the Commission, could, could vote on that today. And I guess I would ask commissioners, assuming that this wording is worked out in a satisfactory manner, are you okay with taking this up and passing it today?
Commissioner, quite frankly, I am, I personally am not. This is, I still think there's some things we need to work out, and I know that this is a time-sensitive manner, that we need to move forward on this. I don't feel particularly comfortable with approving for even a... for even a, a gala of any sorts on this. So I have apprehension, so my vote would probably be no.
The, and I'm not calling for a vote, I'm just trying to get a sense of the commission. Is your reluctance based solely on the, the language here, or are there any other issues that you would like to have addressed before we would bring it up for a vote?
I, I think it's, it's mainly the aspect of it being a semi-formal gala. I don't know quite how this is going to be promoted. How is it going to be promoted any differently than our other events that we've had for the public? Do we really need a gala? That seems, to me, that seems a little excessive. It seems a little, little elite, a little fancy. I spend a lot of my days talking to citizens about how we're going to fix roads and why we don't have budget to fix the potholes. So it's hard for me to turn around and be like, well, we're going to spend this money for a private dinner for people who can put on a fancy dress and show up. So it's, it's a little hard for me to justify this. But if we did something along the lines that we have been doing with our community down here off the square, where it's ice cream or snow cones or hot dogs and anybody can walk up and attend, that's, that's a little easier to, to incorporate everybody in the community and it benefits more people than, than this.
Okay. So I'm not sure now, because, because, let me go ahead and, and, and get Commissioner Carpenter's opinion.
Well, what I think would be great would be to, to have, you know, sort of a united, a united front in terms of what we do. So I think that is goal number one for me. You know, my biggest concern was the invitation part, obviously. I, I think if we're going to do an event with taxpayer funds, it's got to be open to, to any taxpayer. So I appreciate the clarification that, that this would be such an event. But I, of course, understand what you mean in terms of, you know, a, a sort of a fancy elite dress-up event as opposed to a, you know, in the park with hot dogs and hamburgers kind of a thing. Obviously, it's two different fields, so I get where you're coming from, of course. In terms of what the best next step is at this point, I'm not sure. There's a, obviously, a disagreement of, of, of approach here, and I don't, I don't have a suggestion for what to do next, so.
But you are in agreement that the, the invitation-only language change, that were changed to something more, I don't know, more, more inclusive, I guess is about the best way to say it, that, that would relieve your major concern?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think that's the, the biggest concern was, was making sure that anybody could come from Clay County who, who wanted to, certainly. That being said, I, I just want to acknowledge that I totally know where Megan, excuse me, Commissioner Thompson is, is coming from, and so, you know, I'd, I'd rather not have it be a situation where we're, where we've got sort of a divided vote here. But I also don't know what the solution to avoid that is, so, you know, if, if more time would help, obviously, we could attempt to do that, although, you know, as Bob mentioned, you know, reservation may be of a concern, so. Open to ideas.
I'm going to express my thoughts on the matter. I do understand that the invitation-only was unfortunate and unintended phrase that we, we could change, and I think we could change it today if, you know, to, to at least alleviate that particular concern. The semi-formal event, I guess we could change that too, but it, to me, this brings something, two concerns to my mind. One is that we are in fact getting short on time and that we need to figure out what it is we're going to do. A lot of replanning is not really in the cards. As Mr. Martin pointed out, they had other venues in mind which have in fact been booked. The other part of this is that we seeded this, as a commission, we seeded this commission, this bicentennial commission, and I'm, I'm a little bit apprehensive to micromanage it too far and to get too deep into it. They, they put a lot of work and, sweat into this. I'm not, maybe the, maybe it's as simple as, as the semi-formal, it's just changing the phrase. Once again, we might be getting into semantical issues, but the two things that, that cross my mind on this particular issue are, I think the language problem for invitation only is something we could fix really with very short order here today and, and call a vote. As far as, as getting too deeply into planning detail, I, I don't want to be in a position where I'm telling you what color napkins to use.
Thank you.
So that's kind of where, where I'm at on this. Do you have any observations, Mr. Martin?
I think everybody's articulated the situation quite well.
Okay. Administrator, do you have any thoughts that you'd like to share?
Actually, I was just conversing with the city attorney because while what is before the commission is a not-to-exceed, but it is also a contract between the county and the Elms Hotel. So I needed some clarification because it references hotel rooms, a minimum of 10. Now, I know from the commission, that the bicentennial commission, that the county funds would not be paying for that. Individuals who chose to stay would be able to take advantage of that negotiated rate. But I wanted to make sure from a contract perspective that that's not an obligation on behalf of the county, just to make clear what, if, if the commission moves forward with this, exactly what is in the contract itself. So, Kevin, you might want to touch on that.
Mr. Counsel, do you have any observations you'd like to share?
Sure. I, I do have a couple. So, and there are three things. So understand this, this is a contract between us and the Elms, that's it. It's not a contract between us and the bicentennial commission...
Correct.
...or even a statement of what the gala is going to be, should it happen. That could be, continue to be worked on what exactly it's going to be. But I think there are three things here. One is the hotel requirement. It looks to me there's a block of 10 rooms with an agreed price that'll be held for us to utilize. I don't believe, the way I'm reading this, that we are obligated to pay that. If we, if we only use four rooms, then that's all that's used and there's no payment to, to make up that difference by the county. And I actually have a call-in to the Elms to confirm that point, but I think that's right.
Can I speak to that element real quick?
Sure.
You can redline that. No one on the commission has any interest in using those hotel rooms. It was just thrown in as part of the hospitality contract.
Well, and typically it's a courtesy from the hotel...
Right.
...because it gives a guaranteed rate should somebody wish to use it. So we would want that as long as we are, there's absolutely no obligation of the county. That's how I think it's written. I would want to confirm that, but that's how it's written. The, the second thing that I'm seeing is a $1,000 room rate charge with tax and a service charge. My calculation was it's about $1,400, and that is something we would pay.
By the way, when you say room charge, you're talking about the room the event is held and not, you're not talking about a room to be stayed in.
Correct.
I just wanted to clarify.
Ballroom charge, maybe a better term, yeah. And so I, so my, my calculation was about $1,400 for that. And then the third one is the, the food cost, and that's the big one. And that's a minimum $14,500 for just the food, plus a 23% service number, which then gets it up to $17,800 and change. So the way I read the contract, it obligates the county for $19,200 and some change, that we would be obligated whether five people show up or 500. Now, if more, and, and I read the contract to say that it was for 250 people, at least that was the way the application was made, was to cover 250. So my, one of my questions would be is if it was more open, let's say it's 300 or 350 or 400, the contract's written so that we give them an exact number, an RSVP number, and then there's a finalized food price. My calculation was about $71 a person, ends up being the number. So if we add another 100, that's another $7,100. And maybe my, so it goes back to, and this is maybe less of a legal question, but more of a policy question. I guess my question is, why is it free? Because it seems to me a lot of the concerns are alleviated if it's kind of a standard event where the attendees cover that expense, they buy a ticket, buy a table, whatever they do, and then it seems to me that maybe some of those concerns are alleviated, but, but I don't know. I probably ought to leave it at that.
Can I speak to that for just a second?
Yeah, go right ahead.
That's the irony of this conversation, right? We left it free so we could be inclusive, so we could get as many people as possible there and not charge $125 a plate or $35 a plate, whatever the case may be. So, that's a valid question.
What would we do if 400 people say we want to go, we want to show up?
I beg your pardon?
If, if 400 people said, "We want to go," to me, that makes it...
We'd go to the Elms and figure out what that looks like, either in face seating or buffet, and if it had any incremental value, or any incremental impact on the contract, you'd have to tell them, "We have to come back and talk to the commission before anything can be approved."
Right. I mean, it would cost an additional, 400 people would be an additional about $11,000 or so.
Right, but it might not be if we do a buffet.
Sure, okay.
But that's kind of the, excuse me, that's kind of the dilemma in a way, so that if, if, if Joe Smith and his wife decided they want to go and they RSVP'd and it's a free event, in keeping with the idea that it's open to all citizens, if, if relatives come into town or, you know, what the heck, we got tickets to the ballgame, we're going to, that's somebody that's going to give us, we'll go do that. They have no skin in the game, whereas the other part of it would be, if, if, if I were, if it were, if Joe Smith and his wife had paid X number of dollars, they would at least say, "Yeah, you know, we're, we're going to have to just eat the money we paid for it." And that kind of goes back, and it is in conflict with what the, the other was. I, I'd take the point that this has been something that the bicentennial commission had worked through and come up with the best solution they could on this. But I, I do recognize that the dilemma and the tough place that it, that it puts you, you folks in, because we, we're, we're looking at something that is very difficult to quantify, and if it's a simple RSVP, that makes it more difficult.
Well, I, I think, sorry. I honestly think the other challenge is, as typical with most things in which the county does, is there's a dollar not to exceed. So there will be a budget, and to put a budget together, you can find out, well, what is a sit-down dinner, and that's X amount of people. And if it's a buffet, then that may be more people. But there is a fine, it's, it's, we typically don't have open checkbooks on things that we do. And so there will be a limitation on the number of individuals that could attend. It could vary on, but to market it, you sort of have to know, am I coming because it's, you know, appetizers and we're visiting? Is it a sit-down dinner? Is it a buffet? And so, you know, I think helping to market what the event is, you kind of have to know what the structure of the event would be. I think that would help be successful. So I don't know that I have an answer for you. I probably have more questions.
Commissioner Thompson, did you have anything else you wanted to add to the discussion?
I, I think I pretty much summed it up. And like I said, the bicentennial commission has been doing a great job, and I don't want you guys to feel that this is me attacking you at all. You guys put on terrific events. I have a hard time being able to stand in front of the people I, I represent and say, "I'm going to support a gala that is funded by taxpayer dollars." And it's not your fault, and it's just, it's the situation we're in right now, and so I just, I won't be able to move forward with this.
Can I say two things? First of all, I was in that position, obviously, as a taxpayer. I love the fact that you're defending, you're grabbing and holding on to my dollars as best you can, Commissioner, so thank you for that. Just as a footnote to the, to the contract with the Elms, that was actually negotiated with Julie, by Julie Solow, who's the general manager of Harris. So we're quite comfortable that the, the covenants in there are appropriate for what we're trying to accomplish.
Commissioner Carpenter, do you have anything you'd like to add to the discussion?
Well, not necessarily, other than hypothetically, could, could the event be reimagined as not being a gala at the Elms, but as something else, or are we too far along in the, in the process here to, to make that kind of shift?
Well, take it even, let's take it out of the hypothetical. The, the obvious answer to that is yes. My response would be that we've done these other things. We've had an open reception, we've had an ice cream social, we did the HDLI event down here that was a, a picnic-type event. We saw this as a great way to culminate a year-long celebration, but more than culminate, also to look forward. Our vision is that this would be a jumping-off place for the county to look forward to the next 100 or 200 years, whatever the case may be. That was actually why we were looking for other venues. We didn't think this venue gave us the best opportunity to, if you will, fly into the future for Clay County. So we can say it's not a gala, we can say it's not semi-formal. It's at the Elms. People are going to have certain expectations coming to the Elms. So all that positioning to me is immaterial. If it's, if it's the commissions want to not put this function on, obviously, at the end of the day, that's your, that's your call, and we'll go back and regroup and determine what our, what our future looks like.
Did you have anything?
No, but thank you.
Like I say, to, to me, it feels as though the, we have a couple of issues, one of them being largely semantics, which is the invitation-only gala, not a gayless, a celebration. These are issues that are just a matter of how we tend to phrase and frame it. You're right. When we're talking about, if we have the two aspects of it being at the Elms and that it being a sit-down, if indeed that's what it, I believe that's what's on here, is a sit-down, that conjures up certain expectations in the minds of, of most people who would be interested in attending. Like I say, I think we could work out the semantic issues, you know, in, in relatively short order, because it's, it's, it's just easy as changing some words. But I want to go back to the counselor. Mr. Counselor, would you want to, before this contract was approved, would you want to do some more review work before we would go forward on it? Is that what I'm, am I understanding you correctly?
Well, so I, I think the work is really between the commission and, and the bicentennial commission to, to decide what the event's going to be. So, so the way I read the contract, it does a couple things. It obligates us to a room, and it obligates us to spend about $18,000 in food. So the two things we're obligated is about $19,200 purchase for room and food. Under the contract, we have until 14 days before the event to give them a, a number of attendees and basically menu options, menu choices. I read that, say, if we want to reimagine the event at the Elms to be a buffet or, you know, $20,000 in hot dogs, whatever it is, we could do that. I don't think this obligates us to a very formal sit-down dinner. I think that is the, the view, but it could be, all this obligates us to, again, it's the room and the food, and the amount of money to be spent on food. I think we would, if we chose to go this route, we would just need to make sure we understand what event we choose to put on. But I don't think we're obligating it to be a, a, an expensive sit-down dinner that maybe is the initial thought. Or even semi-formal. I mean, I don't think the Elms cares if we show up in tuxedos or shorts, I, I guess. I don't know. I can't imagine they care.
I'm sure with the...
They just care that somebody shows up with a checkbook.
That's, I was, I was going to say, most businesses, certainly first-order businesses, are we getting paid?
Yeah.
Certainly, in the businesses I've been involved in, that was sort of job one, and that is perfectly natural and perfectly appropriate. So I guess the question is, we've got basically two alternatives. We can try to sort out the language thing tonight and get that done and pass it now, or we can push it off till next week. I would strongly recommend not pushing it off any later to next week, because the clock is ticking very, very loudly. Get the language straightened out, and I don't know if there are contractual issues that we need to be concerning ourselves with, because we can reimagine it, but we're still, we would still, under that contract, be obligated for the $18,000 plus the room fee. Is that your reading of the contract?
Yeah, I know, and I'll suggest, again, I don't know that there's any work to be done on the contract. And we talk, and, and I don't, the RCA is advisory. It doesn't matter. What matters is the contract we're signing and the resolution we're passing. So to me, the real work to be done, from what I'm hearing, is with the group about what this event's going to be. And that's it. I mean, I, we don't need to work on the contract, in my opinion.
Okay, that's where I was wanting to go. I was, I was trying to figure out what our hard stops were on this. So it seems to me that, looking at this, like I said, the language is, is a doable thing, but the other thing is this, we tasked the, the bicentennial commission to come up with events. We gave them a budget. They are within budget. You know, I'm, I'm, it's something, something of a loss, you know, certainly the, the way we phrase it, the way we put it together is going to be something that we need to have some, some discussions about. But the, the bicentennial commission was given a charge, and they have worked on that charge, and they have gotten it under budget, as far as I can tell, because was $20,000 the budget?
Fifty.
Fifty, so we are way in.
Was the aggregate budget, and we have not spent anywhere near that.
I think there's $25,000 left on this one, I thought, I saw.
This was, this was asking for a not-to-exceed of $25,000, but there, I believe your total budget was $80,000.
That's right.
And he's correct that they not spent, the $25,000 is within the budget of $80,000 originally budgeted.
So, I mean, like I say, we, we have, we have assigned the bicentennial commission a task. They seem to have performed it. There seemed to be some, some detail, which is always the case, that I think is, is absolutely easily worked out, whether we call it this or that, how we structure the invitations. or that, how we structure the invitations. But my, my thought is, we either need to do this this evening, or we need to do it no later than next week, or we risk losing any kind of a venue that would be appropriate for this event. So, the, both commissioners, both associate commissioners, and let me know if I'm misstating, have some reluctance to do it this evening, is that a correct assumption on my part?
My view is, if it's gonna be a split vote this evening, then I don't want to have the vote this evening. And I, again, I'm grateful to everybody who's putting their time and effort into this, and certainly understand the concerns about it as well. And so, if, you know, tabling it another week makes sense to try and work that out, and if it can't be worked out, then maybe we do something else. But I, you know, this doesn't seem like the kind of item that I want us to move forward on with a, sort of publicly split vote on it, you know, I think it'd be better to not have it be that way, so that's my view.
The working something else out has, is fraught with a lot of concerns that I have on my part. I, you know, since, since clearly the votes are not there for this evening's vote, it's my recommendation that we put it on for, for a decision to be made at our next meeting next week, and at that time, just out of respect for the, for the Bicentennial Commission, we need to be able to give you guys a decision, because you've been on tender hooks on this thing for a long time, and I, I sense that, I sense that, that there may be some members of the commission, that is to say, the Bicentennial Commission, who I think I could understand, feel some degree of frustration at this point, and I want to be sensitive to that, because, once again, they're all volunteers, a lot of the people on the, on the commission are, as you pointed out, with Ms. Solow, being in the hospitality business, we've got a lot of professionals on this board, and I, I'm okay with putting this off till next week, I would prefer not to, because I think we need to move, but if we put it off till next week, I think that is a decision that has to be, that decision has to be made, that will give staff some time to look at the, the language, which I think is the least problematic of what we've got going, and then we can revise that and make sure everybody is good with that, but is that okay with the commissioners?
Well, if I may, Commissioner, you know, I think the other option would, if it would be deemed better to get clarity today rather than next week, I mean, the other option, I think, would be to vote it down, right, and then start from scratch, but I don't know that that's the preferred option either, right? So, and if Mr. Martin wants to weigh in on whether that would be better or not, you know-
I think it's all disappointing, I'll be candid with you. To Mr. Nolte's point, we didn't campaign or stump for this position, we were recruited to do this work, we were given a charge, we conduct our meetings under all the sunshine rules, not one commissioner's ever shown up for any of our meetings, we post our minutes, just as we're challenged to do, so none of this should come as a surprise. If there's wording, if there's nuances, obviously, we're here to make those changes. But to say that we're gonna table this now and do something different, I think is a slap in the face to the professionals that sit on this commission. That's my opinion, I don't reflect the opinion of the commission in this case.
I, I think that what Mr. Martin said is reflective of some of the comments that I have heard, speaking to various members of the commission, I don't care to put anybody on the spot, but I, I think he, I think he reflects the thought process. I'll say one more time, the people that we put onto this commission, who are kind enough to volunteer, have, have put together a plan for an event, they have stayed within budget, and in fact, it looks as though there may be a surplus left over at the end of the year. I don't know that, we don't have crystal balls, but if I had a guess, I would say there will be a substantial amount of that, a substantial percentage of the budget assigned to the Bicentennial Commission that will be returned to the commission and to the general coffers.
Yeah, to that point, there are no current plans for any other expenses beyond what the contract in hand and what we've already spent, so there's no, no further plans past the end of the year.
So really, what we're looking at is, because that will, there will, there will be considerable money left in the budget for these, for this particular year's worth of celebrations that will not be expended, am I right?
That's correct.
Okay. Once again, if it is the consensus of the commission, the consensus I am getting from this, and please let me know if I'm mistaken, is that the commission would prefer to take this up at a future date. My strong recommendation is that it be taken up and that a decision be made at the next commission meeting. I think to do, and to push it off any further than next week, I think risks the, risks the event in total, and I think it's not a good look for this county, doing our 200th year, to fail to put together an event of this sort that would cap our bicentennial year. I think that's, I think that's something that we could, we would not look at with any particular pride. With that, am I, is, if I've got the consensus of the commission that will be on next week's agenda for consideration and hopefully come up for a vote, is that the consensus of the commission?
Yeah, I think we can discuss it next week, or we can deal with it today, I'm open to, to either option, so.
Commissioner, I'm perfectly fine with that, and once again, I'm gonna say, this is no reflection onto our Bicentennial Commission, and if it's, if it's the will of the commission today, I'm happy to vote on this, I will just not be voting for it, and I will not feel bad about feeling the way I do about an item.
I don't, just, again, what I am hearing, what I'm hearing is, the consensus, the best way for it, and the consensus that I am picking up on, is that we are best served in the opinion of this commission to take it up next week, and hopefully, at that time, make a decision. Is that, is that acceptable to the commissioners?
Pansy.
Works for me.
In that case, I'm sorry, did you have anything to add, Administrator?
No, I would just offer to Mr. Martin and the commission, if you'd like, meet with staff, if there's anything we can, to help about the marketing, or the RSVP, or any of the logistics, that you would like to discuss with us and how we could help, we'd be happy to do that before next week.
Sure, I mean, we have our, our meetings posted, we would love for you to come and work on that with us.
Very well, do you have sufficient, do you have sufficient instruction, not only to bring it up next week, but to reconstruct the language, Administrator?
Yes, we'll take care of that, and it will be on next week's agenda on your regular agenda.
And then we will, and it will be there for the, the point of the decision to be made, of course.
Right, it'll be on for a vote.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Martin, we certainly appreciate the, the hard work that you and the, the Bicentennial Commission have done so far this year, and certainly, we look forward to, to having a successful bicentennial year in, in total.
Great, and thank you all three for your service to the county, too, we appreciate it.
Okay, so that brings us to number 22201, Administrator.
Resolution 2022201 is a consideration of professional services contract with C-Biz Benefits and Insurance Services as an insurance broker, and consulting services for employee benefits and property and casualty. The annual contract is $80,000, which is within budget and less than we're currently paying, and HR Manager Kim Callahan is here to share information about the process.
Please proceed.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. Kim Callahan, HR, County Manager. Okay, we received six proposals, six bids, and an evaluation committee ranked the six proposals. We ranked the proposals according to experience, expertise, project approach, cost, and reliability. Okay, after this was done, the top two ranking companies were actually interviewed, okay? And after much evaluation and discussion, it was decided that we would go with C-Biz, that they'd be the best fit and the best value for the county. And like she said, it would be $80,000 for the year, which was actually less than what we had paid previously to our other broker. So, I'm here to answer questions, and I also have three gentlemen from C-Biz that are here, if you have questions of them.
Okay, very well, I think we'll save specific questions for the gentlemen who are, are here from C-Biz, but certainly, Commissioner Carpenter, do you have any questions that you have?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
No questions at the time, thank you.
Well, we appreciate that, and by the way, before we let you go, certainly, to getting a, putting this kind of an issue out to bid is not exactly, or I should say, to get the work to bring in these kinds of offers is not a small task, and we certainly appreciate the, the hard work and the dedication it took. This is an issue that we have that is continually, you know, something that takes more and more of our resources, so sharpening our pencils is absolutely the way we should be going. Thank you.
Well, I'm excited and looking forward to working with these gentlemen, so, so did you want to have them come up and?
Yes, I wasn't sure if you had one spokesman, or if you wanted to come up as a group, or how you wanted to do it, but if you could give us kind of an overview, this is something of a lengthy document, so if you could just kind of give us the high points, obviously, we will be researching it yet further, but if you want to give us a bit of a presentation.
My name is Matt Kroll, and I work on the employee benefit side with C-Biz, and have Eric Muddenhoff with C-Biz as well on the employee benefit side, and Tom Maguire with us today as well. We're all part of the RFP response process and part of the interview process, as Kim just mentioned. So, we're here today to answer any questions you may have about our response or anything that we went through as we met with your team here a few weeks ago.
Okay. Commissioner Carpenter?
No, I don't have any questions, thank you, look forward to this next chapter with the county, and I'm glad the bid process, I'm grateful to everybody who participated in it, and look forward to the partnership going forward, thank you.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, I have no questions at this time, but I am excited, if, if Kim is excited, because I, I trust her expertise in moving forward with this and our, our benefits here for the county, but once again, thank you for coming up here today and seeing all of us in action and all of our excitement here in Clay County, so I look forward to working with you guys.
Yeah, we appreciate it, and we're looking forward to partnering with everyone here and getting to work right away, right, Kim? Like, right away, like yesterday.
Yeah, I remember that you actually, I think, worked with the county, but that was prior to, excuse me, my terminal service here, so I don't have firsthand experience.
And some of our team members that were in the interview process have some experience with the county prior to the current arrangement, so they would be involved from, from day one, got some good history, and we're looking forward to it.
All right. Excuse me, I'm sorry, dry throat there. This is something 2022201 would appear on our regular agenda next week? Very well, 2022201 will be on next week's regular agenda for consideration. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to 2022203, I see my voice comes back.
Resolution 2022203 is consideration of a memorandum of understanding with the North Kansas City School District and the Sheriff's Department for School Resource Deputies. Captain Phil Cofer is here to present information for the commission.
And the sheriff.
I'm sorry, and the sheriff. I apologize.
I'd rather hear from Captain Cofer, I'll gladly step aside.
So do, so do I, do I pick up on this right? The captain is here to make a presentation, and the sheriff. Well, if, if-
He wanted to tag along.
Yeah, well, as long as the sheriff tagged along, if you'd like to speak to us, we listen to you as well, Mr. Sheriff.
Will Aiken, Clay County Sheriff, the reason why I wanted to step up here in place of Captain Cofer, who is more than capable of speaking on the, on the topic, I just wanted to say that we're, again, here before the commission to seek the same request to approve the contract between the Clay County Sheriff's Office and the North Kansas City School District, as we have the last 22, 23 years. I wish I could say that this is just another request for this contract, however, we're following on the heels of the tragic incident that happened in Uvalde, Texas, and that situation down there strengthens the need for school resource deputies to be in the North Kansas City School District, as well as the partnership that we have with the school district, so I definitely wanted to throw that out there, and just be open for questions on, on the situation, or from Captain Cofer, who might be able to answer more specific questions about our relationship with the North Kansas City School District.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any questions or comments that you'd like to make?
I have no questions, but I am in full support of this, of course, and, you know, I always love seeing Cofer come up here, but also you, that other guy, just showing up, so, yeah.
I also felt good, because I actually had the opportunity and the time to come up here and see everyone, so I didn't want to miss out on that opportunity.
Yeah, well, you are always welcome to come join us, so, I know that, I have no other questions today, thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No questions, but yeah, thanks for being here, and obviously, an important program and partnership between the Sheriff's Office and my district that I graduated from, and is a wonderful district that educates over 20,000 students right here in Clay County, and as you say, as important as ever to, to be on top of, you know, keeping kids safe, and I trust the office under your leadership to, to get that done, so, thank you.
Certainly, as a, a parent, and I, back in the dark ages, when I was in school, I don't know that we had, had these kinds of officers in the schools, it was, it was happily not as necessary as it is today, but as someone who has a parent, a parent who's had children in school, and even more to the point, as someone who was a teacher at one time and went through, what do you do when there is an active shooter? Exercise. To me, this is something that, that I have some, some very, very small personal experience with, and while I've thankfully never been involved in one of those incidences, as you go through the training for it, it, it makes it much more concrete than it would be just thinking of it in the abstract, so certainly an important, an important step forward, and certainly some, a program that we need to continue to, to be supportive of. So, with that, if there are no further questions, 2022203 on regular for next week?
I'm fine with that.
Very well, they'll be on regular.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Captain, and your assistant. That brings us to 2022 Ordinance 11, Administrator?
Yes, Ordinance 2022-11 is consideration of an amendment and revision to the 2022 adopted budget. This is in receipt of a grant from the state, so it's increasing revenues by $3,900, but also increasing the expenditure line item in the same amount of $3,900 for the juvenile administration, and Terry Hargrave is here and present information to the commission.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, thank you for having me. Terry Hargrave, Office of Dispute Resolution. We are very, very lucky here to have this grant funding, this was new for COVID this year, and this is for our child abuse and neglect cases for paternity establishment. So when kiddos come into care and there hasn't been a paternity establishment case or a parenting plan, and the parents are no longer married, we are able to provide legal services to help them with a paternity establishment case, to move the child abuse and neglect case, and then the CD case along, to make sure that those kids are not further traumatized, and they are placed with a biological parent.
Very good. Commissioner Carpenter?
No questions, but thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
No questions, but thank you so much for doing this, and we'd love that we get these grants for this and help you guys out, so.
Oh, thank you.
So, as this is money coming in, there's no expenditure involved, are we okay with consent?
Yes.
Very well, 2022 Ordinance 11 will be on next week's consent calendar. That brings us to 2022 Ordinance 12, Administrator?
Yes, 2022 Ordinance 12 is also consideration of amending the 2022 budget in the amount of $9,000, again, a state grant, so it's increasing the revenues, but also increasing the expenditures by $9,000 for juvenile administration, and Terry Hargrove is here to talk about this additional grant.
Please proceed.
Hi again, Terry Hargrave, Office of Dispute Resolution. The state has so graciously accepted a new proposal to up our grant funding $9,000 for the fiscal year of 2021, which actually just ended, so we're heading into 2022, but they have already accepted the invoices and are going forward with the reimbursements, so we just ask for this money to be moved over.
Okay. Commissioner Carpenter?
Questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
No questions, but once again, thank you.
Thank you.
You can come all the time if you want to bring money like this.
You know, I think Diana and Vic and Ben might be a little tired of my emails at the moment.
Those are emails we love to get.
Well, just right before we came up here, we are in the process of starting a few new programs- we are in the process of starting a few new programs. And I would like to introduce Umimi Battle. He is the new program coordinator. So he is actually in the middle of a boys' circle training that has been funded by DYS. And so we can provide a boys' circle here in Clay County, hopefully starting in the fall. And we're also looking at starting two more possibly by the fall. And so I've emailed a lot of organizations. And Orshlins just gave us a donation of $500 to go towards that. So we're very grateful for the community's support.
Well, thank you again for your hard work and I'm glad to have you with us.
Thank you all.
2022 Ordinance 12 also on consent?
Yes.
Very well. 2022-198, Administrator?
Resolution 2022-198 is consideration of a term and supply contract with input technology. This request is from the Assessor's Office for printing and mailing services. And the assessor Baldwin is here and presented information to the commission.
Please proceed.
Hello, Commissioners. Tracy Baldwin, Clay County Assessor. What this is, is just a bid for a new printing company for our printing services.
Okay. Sounds pretty straightforward. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any questions or comments?
I have no questions. That's always a pleasure to see you.
You too.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No questions. Thank you.
Very well. If it's the will of the commission, 2022-198 will be on next week's consent agenda? Okay, I seem to have head nods, so it will be on next week's consent agenda. That brings us to 2022 Ordinance 13. Administrator?
2022 Ordinance 13 is consideration of revisions to the 2022 budget. And this request is to authorize payment for the state audit that was performed by the state auditor in the amount of $231,453. And Auditor Herbert is here to talk about the funding for this that is an unbudgeted item and where the funding is coming from.
Ms. Auditor?
Yes, Victor Herbert, Clay County Auditor. 2022 Ordinance 13, as Administrator Wright mentioned, is to be able to provide budget to pay for the cost of the state audit. Per Missouri law, first-class counties and who have a petition audit are required to pay for the costs of a state audit. Just a little background to provide for this. You know, the, the original estimate of the cost came in 2018. And as we know, the state audit was delayed some time. So State Auditor's Office worked with, you know, various groups and that changed. And so, you know, getting the final estimate was something that took a while. There was a statement by the State Auditor's Office at one point that they would waive legal fees for the, you know, the cost of the lawsuit against their office that they won. However, they were not waiving, of course, the cost for the state audit itself. So that's what this bill is for. Just for additional background, I did reach out to the State Auditor's Office with the administrator to confirm that these don't include legal fees. And also secondarily, the invoice amount, there was a discrepancy. Like the first letter was a little bit higher, 231,617.52. And the actual cost we verified, $231,452.87. So that's essentially it. And again, as, as we mentioned, the reappropriation is utilizing TIF rebates and closeouts above budget to be able to fund it. So out of the general fund for that amount. So that's really all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
No questions. Thank you.
And this is something that you're requesting action on today?
So I would say that if it's, if it's the will of the commission, I mean, the, the invoice does say it's, you know, due within 30 days. And it was dated May 17th. So in order for us to get that through timely and in the mail would be, you know, looked, looked upon, but we can work, you know, either way. They have assurance that we're, we're going to get this paid. So yeah, if that's the will of the commission, we would, we would seek approval today.
Very well. Something that I would like to just make mention on this. We had a discussion up here earlier about an issue. And there was some, there was, you know, a discussion between commissioners. There was a diversity of views and that was all well and good and that was healthy. And I want to just say that that was a, a good exchange. I have to think that this bill would be significantly less onerous if the previous commission had displayed the poise and the, and the interest in the, in the public that our current associate commissioners are, have been expressing. So I got to tell you, I, I'm disappointed that it is so high, but I think we've moved beyond that. And I think we have associate commissioners now who would act quite differently and we would have a quite different outcome if that were the case. So that being said, is there a motion related to 2022 Ordinance 13?
I recommend that we approve 2022 Ordinance, Ordinance 13 today.
Motion has been made for Ordinance 20, the approval of Ordinance 2020, excuse me, 2022 Ordinance 13. Discussion, Commissioner Thompson?
No discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further comment, you're recognized to close.
Thank you. Well, I just want to, you know, echo your remarks and thank you for them. And, you know, absolutely, I, you know, wish we didn't have to pay this $230,000 bill. I think prior leadership in the county brought us to the point where the residents of Clay County felt the need to, to call for this audit. And I think they were right in doing so and I'm grateful that they did. And we got the document with a lot of good information and best practices. And I know we're implementing that now. And of course, part of that is we're obligated to pay this bill. So let's pay it. And with that, I close.
Very well. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Very well. That brings us to our next issue, 2022-196. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-196 is the consideration of a special event permit for Studio 10 Dance. And Deputy County Administrator Kuntz is here to talk about that particular event.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon. Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator. And at this moment, may I say, I'm glad the rain has stopped. It has been a very busy morning for all county staff with trees down, water in buildings. So I'm glad at this moment, there's a little sunshine out there. I'm coming before you to request from one of our area businesses to utilize the Rooney Justice Plaza for Saturday, July the 23rd, for a benefit dance. This vendor is Studio 10 Dance. They have been doing an annual, in fact, this is their 17th year of a benefit dance to raise awareness for breast cancer. This year, their proceeds would go to Missy's Boutique at the KU Medical Center.
Very well. Has it, this is the 17th year of this event. Has it been here in the county all 17 years?
Not the full 17, but for the last three years it has been.
Very good. Any questions or comments, Commissioner Carpenter?
No questions. Thanks.
Commissioner Thompson?
Only one question I have and it's silly. I do think it's a typo. So it is July the 23rd is Saturday, correct? Am I right?
Yes, should be Saturday. And they have a backup rain date?
It says Monday on the front page.
Does it?
It does.
It does. Well, we'll move it to a Saturday for you.
That's all. That's the only, that's the only thing I had. That's it.
So do we want, can we change that so we're looking at it next week?
I've already given that change to staff and.
Yeah, we'll make that change.
Very good. On top of it, as always, as was just observed. Thank you very much. This is something I think we could put on consent if that is the will of the commission.
I agree.
2022-196 will be on next week's consent agenda. That brings us to 2022-199. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-199 is consideration of a special event license with Northland Outdoor Adventures for recreational equipment rental at Smithville Lake. And Park Director Driscoll is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon. Mike Driscoll, Parks Director. We have a request for approval of a revocable license for Northland Outdoor Adventures to conduct recreational equipment rental at Smithville Lake. This consists of rental of kayaks and paddle boards, stand-up paddle boards. They will ask to do business at their main setup point at Little Platte Beach and also to deliver to various points designated around the lake at, at the campgrounds or at the marinas for their rentals. They are asking to operate from June 15th this year through September 15th, basically the rest of the summer through the end of the beach season. And basically from 8:00 to 6:00 PM each day. They will use trailers to transport their equipment each day and they will be removed each day as well. They do not keep anything on property overnight. And they will pay a sum of $125 for this agreement for the season. Their employees and staff will pay regular daily interest fees for the park, either by, by an annual pass or daily fees. And patrons, of course, for their business will pay the regular park admittance fee. They've been doing this since 2016. They're, have really done pretty well. And despite ownership changes, the basic proposal is the same. And the Corps of Engineers has provided approval for this agreement. And we would ask that this license be signed and approved.
Very good. And I saw nothing that led me to believe that we had any expenditures coming from the county on this issue.
Excuse me.
There are no, there are no county expenditures being made on this issue. Am I correct? We're not, there's no, there's no county money
No.
being spent on this?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Thompson?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No questions. Thanks.
That being the case, 2022-199, consent?
I agree.
Yes.
Very well. It will be on the consent agenda. That brings us to 2022-200. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-200 is consideration of an event license with Kansas City Sports Commission to take place in Sailboat Cove on Saturday, July 30th. And Parks Director Driscoll is here to provide information about the event.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mike Driscoll, Parks Director. This request is for approval for the license for the 16th Annual Web for KC Sports Triathlon, Women's Triathlon and Duathlon at Sailboat Cove. This has been a great event for many years. It's a pretty complex, but they have the event down very well. They will provide basically all amenities needed for the, for conducting this event. And they expect, I think, 500 to 800 participants probably for this year. It is, it is a, basically a one-day event, but they do come in for setup the day before. Basically, they will pay, all participants pay the regular park fees. It is asked to waive prices for interest for the event staff and volunteers. There are, let's see, there are road closures involved and the Sheriff's Department has been permitted, is permitted to do road closures and, and provide for that bicycle race part of the triathlon. The Sheriff's Department also provides security at the race site. And this is all done through the Web for KC staff. The licensee will be able to use some golf carts and a four-wheeler, I think, for race participation at the event just to move people or goods around as needed or in emergencies. They have a very good emergency and weather plan in place in case of that eventuality at the lake. They will provide the dumpsters, portable restrooms, whatever's needed for the event. And, and they also have permission to begin setup at 4:00 AM on the day of the event and basically last till about 10:30 with, with the event closing and the last of the, of the participants coming in. The slipholders will have access to the docks as usual. They're just asked to park in the upper lot there where they can still access the docks as needed by them. And we provide satellite parking over at Kelsey Short if there's need for it, for spectators. And they supply buses to send people over to Sailboat Cove. For all of that, this is just to ask that this license be approved and enjoy the 16th Annual Race.
Questions or comments, Commissioner Carpenter?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, 2022-200 would appear, if everybody's good with that, on our consent agenda?
I'm good with it.
Very well. That brings us to 2022. Let me make sure when I turn the page that I am giving the proper number. 204. Matches up. How great.
Resolution 2022-204 is consideration of approving a covenant to maintain stormwater detention facility and BMPS plat of Brighton Creek Crossing. And County Councilor Graham will provide information to the commission.
Mr. Counselor?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, so this is a covenant, a contract to do stormwater detention maintenance. Kansas City is requiring it. Kansas City's drafted it. And they won't file the final plat that we approved a few weeks ago without this. So I think I'm generally in favor of it. My request is going to be that we keep it on regular. The attorney that I need to talk to, to work out a few of the details of this document is actually in Argentina and is going to be back, I think, on Monday. But there is some urge, as I understand, that he's expressed that there is some urgency to this because of some tenants in some other lots on that property. So I do think we ultimately need to do it, but I also would like to keep it on regular and give me a chance to work with him when he gets back in the country.
Thank you. Yeah, I've spoken with some of the people involved in this and I got the same feeling that there was no, it did not require action today that next week or, you know, certainly at some point is going to be acceptable to all parties. So that's a, that's a good thing. This is something that I think is probably going to be beneficial to, to the county in that it will, obviously, we have property on that lot as well. This is something I think that will allow us to keep more viable options open on how the commission would care to dispose of that property at whatever point we take that up.
That's correct. I mean, the final plat has to be recorded really before we can do anything to dispose of the property, should we choose to or really do anything with the property.
Yes, we, there's, yeah, this is something that is a good thing for us to do. With that, are there any questions of the council?
No questions. Thank you.
I have one question. Just want to make sure. Is there a cost associated with this? Do we have to pay anything?
Not at this point, no.
No? Okay.
No.
Just making sure.
There's a, there's a conceivable cost if the facility, the, the stormwater detention facility were to fail and the parties that are, that are contracted to this would be responsible for it. So that's ultimately what Kansas City wants. If, if there is a, a future expense necessary for this piece of land, they don't want to pay it, which is understandable, that the tenants, the people who own the land would be the ones responsible for it.
Got you. Okay.
But, but at this point, no, there's no cost.
Good.
And I, to be honest, don't anticipate a future cost at any time before, I think we will probably want to do something with the property.
Very well. With that, the recommendation from council, and I agree, would be to put 2022-204 on regular for next week. Is that good to everybody? Good for you?
Yes.
Very well. That brings us to 2022-197. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-197 is a consideration of appointment to fill a vacant position on the Clay County Public Health Center Board of Trustees. This is a little different than normal boards and commissions that are appointed by the county commission. These are elected positions. But under state statute, if a vacancy occurs due to a resignation, which is what has occurred, then the commission does fill the vacancy and appoint an individual until the next municipal election, which will be in April of 2023. The name before the commission for consideration is Mr. Pledgie. And he is in the audience this evening. And certainly would be happy to answer any questions. You do have his application, I believe, or at least have his resume before you that was included in the packet for his consideration.
Before I recognize Mr. Pledgie, I just want to say that we have the resume, not the application, because our online application does not allow for application to be made in. the application, because our online application does not allow for application be made in something not listed, and this is a very one-off kind of a situation, although we have done this in the past as well in relatively recent history. In putting this nomination together, I reached out, first off, the vacancy was created when Patricia Dixon submitted her resignation. She was, in fact, the chair, the vice chair Kathy Elmeyer assumed the chair duties. I talked with her, and I asked her what kind of skill set there was that she was looking to fill. The approach I like to take when possible is to basically say, you need somebody who has a legal background, a financial background, or any other particular skill set that maybe is not represented on the panel as it exists right now. Her response to me was that she wanted to, her preference as far as skills and background would be someone with an administrative type of background. She felt that they had enough people with a medical background to have that base covered. Furthermore, I had talked to Dr. Lancer Gates, who is also a member, and Mr. Pledgie's name came up in that line as well. There were really no other applications. There was, that was, I shouldn't say applications, but there were no other resumes forwarded to me. So with that, the last point I guess I would make is I want to make sure that when we put people on these kinds of boards and commissions, that we put somebody in there who is for the long haul, if at all possible. One of my questions to Mr. Pledgie was, would you, are you going to be wanting to go for another term? Obviously, you've got to be in there and see if you like it, but he expressed a willingness to continue. And to me, that was important because it allows a sense of continuity to the board. So that's kind of the background right there. I'll let Mr. Pledgie kind of give us his own thoughts, and then we'll go ahead and open up for discussion. Mr. Pledgie?
Thank you. My name is Andrew Pledgie. I want to start with saying I very much appreciate this opportunity. I'm a lifelong Clay Countyan, almost 99.9%, a year in Omaha. And I am here just to visit the opportunity to be considered for the Clay County Public Health Board. I'll accept any questions.
Commissioner Thompson?
I'll make it very easy. I have no questions for you, but thank you for coming in today. I appreciate it and having an interest in joining the health center, so.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, and thank you for your interest. I think we met briefly, and good to see you again. So my question is, you know, with the county health board going forward, obviously, we've had, come through the pandemic, and, you know, we're going to be dealing with some of the ongoing effects of that for years to come in terms of work around public health and all that. And so I am curious, just in terms of ongoing efforts to get people vaccinated and boosted, and obviously, at some point, you know, as the virus continues to change, and they'll come out with, you know, newer modified vaccines. And so it's going to be an ongoing thing that the Health Department will play some role in going forward. And I'm just curious, your thoughts on whether or not you support the Health Department playing sort of an active role in continuing to encourage and facilitate vaccination here in the county? And whether or not you'd want the Health Department to prioritize that work in the years going forward?
Absolutely. I have 30 years' experience in healthcare administration. I'm currently working with a private pharmacy, a long-term care pharmacy. We've been active in vaccinating nursing facilities, staff, and residents for the past two-plus years. We're on the second round of boosters right now. We're very much familiar with the ongoing changes in the vaccination guidelines and what have you. So I feel I would be very poised to join in those conversations, to continue going forward with that.
Good deal. Yeah, no, I appreciate the experience. Hopefully, that can, you know, help, like Commissioner Altman mentioned, sort of make the board as well-rounded as possible. So, but you do, you would envision the board sort of taking an active role in continuing to try to increase vaccination rates here in the county?
I do, in helping any way that we could.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think that kind of, excuse me, rounds off what we need. Certainly, we will, if there are any further questions, you know, a commissioner who has questions may well want to reach out to you. Again, no reflection on yourself, but this will be put on as all appointments are on to regular agenda, so we will take it up again for discussion next week, just so you're aware.
Thank you.
So we would be putting 2022-197 on for regular next week? And that brings us to our final item, 2022-202. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-202 is consideration of the appointment of Ms. Risa Ann Powell to the Bicentennial Commission. This is for an appointment whose term would expire on May 12, 2023.
Once again, this is one of the appointments that came up. We had some other interest, but we had another application, and that gentleman decided he did not want to pursue it any further. And I think that's about it. I think there might have been one other application?
There was just one other application.
Okay. So, by the way, her first name is pronounced Risa, just in case you would want to talk to her. So Risa would be there, and then she would fill the unexpired term. That would be Mr. Broomefield, I think. Was that when he vacated, or was it the other vacated position she's?
I believe it was.
Ms. Gurley?
Yes.
Okay. We had two positions, and she is filling one of those two positions. With that, I don't know that she is here today. Are there any questions that the commission would like? I'll try my best to answer anything that you might have.
Not for me. Thanks.
No questions. Thank you.
Very well. With that, 2022-202 will appear on our regular agenda for next week. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Is there a motion related to the disposition of those items that we had heard today?
Commissioner, I meant that we put the following items on next Wednesday's regular agenda, 2022-201, 2023, 2024, 197, and 202. And the following items on next week's consent agenda, 2022 Ordinants 11, 2022 Ordinants 12, 2022-198, 196, 199, and 200.
On your list, did you? Did you mention 2022-185?
That was my, we discussed it as being regular, but there was not a separate vote for it, so it does still need a vote.
Right. So is that something, Commissioner, that you'd like to include on?
Yes. Good point. Thank you. Let's include that on 2022-185 on next week's regular agenda. Thank you.
Very good. Motion has been made for the moving of this agenda into the regular and consent agendas for our next meeting. Discussion? Commissioner Thompson? Seeing no further discussion, you're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That brings us to comments on non-agenda items. Excuse me. Are there any members of the public, office holders, or agencies who would wish to comment? Mr. Sheriff?
Sheriff of Clay County, Will Aiken. While I have everyone in the same room, I just want to brief you on last night's storms. Clay County didn't sustain a lot of damage. It was a lot of trees down. The facilities has been helping us out, as well as the Highway Department, so they've been doing a phenomenal job, a lot of trees down the roadways, twisted trees. But something that we identified this morning, and the City of Liberty, along with the National Weather Service, are doing damage assessments right now from basically Liberty North High School to Mosby, because there are indications of a tornado that had went through that area. So again, it's just trees toppled over and one Morton Building that was damaged. No injuries, thankfully, but we're still waiting on the final assessment on that. If it was, it was only an EF1 tornado, which was experienced in Johnson County, Kansas, and I believe in Platte County, and as well as Buckner. So I just wanted to brief everyone up on that. And, yeah, we'll go from there and enjoy the nice weather. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Very good.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public office holders or elected officials this evening? Seeing none, that brings us to administrator comments. Administrator?
Thank you, Commissioner. Just a couple items. Number one, earlier we had the approval of the state audit invoice, and so I just want to remind everyone that out on the city's website, or excuse me, county's website, under Transparency Portal, we have a status report on the recommendations from the state audit, along with a dashboard. And so that was presented about a month ago, and we intend to update that in six-month intervals. So again, we encourage the public to go out and take a look at that and an update on those recommendations from the state auditor. The other item that is listed under my comment period is to talk about the meetings of August for the county commissioners. I've shared some information with the commissioners. We know that we will have one commissioner that will be unavailable to attend the meetings August 17 and August 24. There is somewhat of a recommendation by staff to consider having just two meetings in August. One would be a work session, and one would be a business meeting. We can accommodate that as long as we have enough lead time to know that would be the number of meetings we would have in August. Part of it is to help, you know, a little bit for people to take a vacation and not be in conflict with missing meetings. The other would, really the more important, is to give us an opportunity to do some construction here in the chambers in preparation for having seven commissioners starting in January. We know that we're going to have to do some construction work and create ideas that can accommodate seven officials. Our goal would be to work with a contractor to get most of that work done during basically a gap, that if we only had two meetings in August, that would give us at least a three- or four-week gap between meetings, that we could do the construction and then not displace the commission and still hopefully have everything functioning and can be available for live streaming and also videotaping afterwards for the public. So the question for the commission is, you know, if that is acceptable to you, then looking at what those meetings would be. Would they be the 3rd and the 10th? Or would they be, and I know someone may have a conflict on the 3rd, or would it be the 10th and the 17th? Obviously, our preference would be the 3rd and the 10th. That gives us the most time for construction between August the 10th and September the 7th. Gives us about four weeks to do construction. But if that is not available to commissioners, then holding those meetings, the 10th and the 17th, would give us at least three weeks, and we could get, hopefully, a substantial amount of the construction done during that time. But I wanted to open that up for discussion and see if the commission, what your pleasure would be about scheduling those meetings.
Just one slight correction. I will be, I will be available on the 17th. So I might have miscommunicated.
So it's the 24th and 31st, because we have five meetings in August. So thank you.
Right. So we have one that's going to be out of the way anyway. So, yeah, I think you said the 17th and 24th, but the 17th I would be available for, just for the purposes of our discussion.
Thank you.
Yes, available for any of the weeks, so whatever works best for everybody's calendar. Anything works for me.
I also was able to clear up that small little issue. So I'm free for whatever weeks we need me. No problems.
So if everyone is available, our preference would be to have the work session on August the 3rd, the business meeting on August the 10th, and therefore, there would be no commission meetings the 17th, the 24th, or the 31st. So the next meeting would then be September 7th. And that gives us about that four-week period that hopefully we can get a significant amount of work done in this room.
Good deal. Works great for me. Thanks.
And we do have the availability, if something comes up of an urgent nature, that we could schedule a single meeting on the 17th. If, again, if there were some circumstance that required emergency action or relatively rapid action, we do have that. Wednesday would still be available to you.
Absolutely. Sounds like all three of you would still be available on the 17th, and we could do that with proper notice to the public. But our goal would be to schedule those things. And primarily, the lead time we need is to make sure that we know that for our planning and zoning projects, so we can work with the applicants and work with those schedules to move their projects forward.
Thank you. Any further thoughts to be expressed?
Thank you.
All right. Then we'll get that noted and move forward and get that on your calendars. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Administrator. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Thompson?
No comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No comments. Thanks.
I just have two things I would like to say, first being that certainly we appreciate the hard work by our staff and everybody involved during the recent storm. While it could certainly have been much worse, we certainly appreciate the fact that any problems are mitigated by the fact that our staff works very hard and very professionally to take care of those issues. The second issue that I'd like to address was that I had recently, unfortunately, tested positive for COVID-19 some weeks ago. Fortunately, it was a light case, and I have, I am over it, and I have been released by the doctor to be able to interact like a relatively normal human being. That being said, I would like to say that what I would attribute the fact that I had a rather light case of this particular virus to is the fact that I have been fully vaccinated and that I am as boosted as I can be. Once again, I want to make sure that citizens understand that they need to take an active part in their, in their own health, and that they should, in fact, do their best, consult with your medical professional, and determine your best course of action. For me, getting vaccinated and boosted was that particular course of action, and I think, I think I was the better for having had it done. But again, individual decisions that people need to make, take responsibility for your own health. With that, that brings us to approval of minutes. We have four minutes to approve. Is there any, is there a motion related to those four sets of minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the four sets of minutes on here.
Motion has been made for the approval of the minutes of March 2, 2022, 3:00 p.m., March 30, 2022, 6:00 p.m., March, excuse me, April 6, 2022, 3:00 p.m., and April 13, 2022, 6:00 p.m. Discussion?
No discussion.
You are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Written reports to the commission?
Yes, we had three this month. We had the Auditor's Cash Basis Month Report for the month of May. And then from the county auditor, we had a performance audit on time card approvals. And then we emailed, I believe, out today, a new updated May report for revenue and fees from the clerk's office. If you did not receive those, I'd be glad to send them.
Have commissioners received those communications? Administrator, have you received those communications?
Yes, I have. Thank you very much. And if I could add one thing, and we appreciate the comments about staff and the hard work that they've done in light of the storm. And I encourage you, and everyone listening, hopefully, if you've not gone to our Facebook page, I encourage you to do that. There are some pictures there showing the magnitude of the streets and the Highway Department did with the trees down. And there is one photo that is in particular, where you have a staff person working in a massive amount, and it shows you the magnitude and the size of a tree that fell across the highway, that our department was very busy clearing away so that traffic could go through. So we appreciate staff doing the work. We also appreciate the picture that shows the magnitude of what the storm did and the debris that our staff handled today.
Thank you very much. I don't think we can point that out too often. Whenever I see these situations, it puts me in mind of the flooding that happened some years ago in the Mosby area, and there was a very touching photo of a sheriff's deputy carrying a child to safety. So I think that that one picture is worth 1,000 words and then some. Executive sessions are on and enlisted. That brings us to recess and adjournment. We are adjourned. Thank you.